Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to start our regulation session. And the first presenter is Professor Vladimir Stanov from Siberian Federal University. This is, let me see, our presentation, Automatic Design of Mutation Perimeter Adaptation for Differential Evolution.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, just a second. Yeah, let us begin. So we are going to talk about numerical optimization. So we had one talk about it already. So what should you do in numerical optimization? Well, it's relatively simple. You are given a goal function f of x, and you should find the best, the best x. So what can possibly go wrong here? Well, there is one problem. The functions are black box, so you don't, you don't know the function. You don't see it. You can only calculate the, the value of the function. So what should you do? Well, usually you have to find not just the best x, but the global optimum. And finding a global optimum can be really hard. So it's like it's hiding somewhere, and you need a really, really good algorithm to find global optimum. Of course, this depends on the problem. So what algorithm should you use for, for such kind of problems? Well, obviously, you should use the best one. And which one is the best? Let's look at the optimization challenge from the Congress of the Soluptionary Computation in 2022, last year. So here are the thirteen participants, and you can see they are quite, quite different algorithms. But if you look a little bit closer, these algorithms that are marked here, they are variants of differential evolution. And the top three methods are also differential evolution. So there are some other methods, like particle swarm optimization, but they never get to top, top values. So what is differential evolution? Well, it's a population-based optimization method. So it just starts by generating several random points, and then mutation strategies applied. So for example, here is one of the popular current two-p best mutation strategy, which consists of two parts. We move to one of the p percent best solutions, and we move to the side just to explore search space. So we do both exploration and exploration in mutation. So also differential evolution has crossover, like any other revolutionary algorithm. So we just combine genetic information of our new solution and some of the solutions from the population. Then we have selection, which is very simple. If our new solution is better, we save it. If it is worse, then we don't save it. So and, well, the, the number of successful solutions divided by population size is our success rate. So the problem with differential evolution is that it has several main parameters, like scaling factor F and crossover rate, which significantly influence the performance. So one of the best known up-to-date methods for controlling is the so-called success history adaptation. So it generates F and CR with KaShi normal distribution. Then it has several memory cells, and the memory cells are updated every generation. So you calculate the weighted mean of average values, and the weights are improvement values, so something like this. Then you update the memory cells with these mean values. Okay, this sounds maybe a little bit complicated. Now, a short word about baseline algorithm that we used in this study. So it's a variant of differential evolution with two populations. One is a population of two individuals, another is population of top individuals. So there are some other differences, but this is not the focus of current study. It is very similar to the differential evolution with success history adaptation, and in fact, it uses the same adaptation methods. So how does parameter adaptation work in shape? So usually, it looks something like this. So our F and CR values may go up and down depending on the stage of the search. And, well, we hope that, that it does the right thing. But as the practice shows, the success adaptation can be a greedy method, and it follows the improvement right here and right now. But maybe in the long term, this may be not the best way to optimize. So the idea is, what if we try to generate a new parameter adaptation method for differential evolution? So we don't know how to make a new one. Let us use another algorithm that would do it instead of us. So this kind of approach is called hyper heuristic. So we can generate new parameter adaptation methods, and in fact, we use some optimization method to generate settings for another optimization. So this is called hyper heuristic. So what can we use as a higher level optimization? For example, genetic programming or new revolution? Because they are flexible and generate various solutions. So for example, this is one of the experiments that was done before. We used genetic programming, and we, we used as inputs resource ratio, the success rate of the algorithm, and the result is the mean value to generate scaling factor F. So what did it come up with? Well, the solutions looked something like this. So the inputs are the success rate, resource ratio, and the output of success history adaptation. Then the result is the F values. What does this tell us? If you look closely at, at some of the solutions that genetic programming provided, they are actually quite simple. So we take success rate, we take square root, and that's it. So based on this idea, the success rate-based adaptation was proposed. So we just take some root of success rate and use it as scaling factor. Very simple. So we may use not just square root, third order root, fourth order root, and so on. So in fact, the success rate adaptation can be reduced to very simple rules. So we divide number of successful by total population size, take root, then use it in CaShi distribution. So compared to success history adaptation, it is much simpler. Just a single equation that does, does the job instead of many, many, many steps that you should perform, some memory cells, calculation of means, and so on. And it also works better. But this is what, what was done in previous works. So basically, what, what does it do? What does success rate-based adaptation do? If our success rate is small, then probably we are stuck in a local optimal, and maybe we should switch to more exploration of the search space. And if our success rate is large, so we should move, wish our F, our scaling factor should be higher, and we should move closer to one of the p percent best solution. So this was the idea of one of the previous works. Here, we ask the following question. Is there a way to connect the percentage of best solution, p best, to the success rate? Is it also connected to success rate? So this is the question that we try to answer here. So how did we do it? We already mentioned today the efficient global optimization method. And the reason is that it is quite efficient approach, which uses Gaussian process to build an approximation of, of the target function. And every iteration, it solves another optimization problem. So it's so-called surrogate approach. And this is useful when the evaluation takes a lot of time. And, okay, here you can see some, some visualization of ego. So it, every iteration, we have another new point, which is found like a minimum of the red line, and we build a better and better approximation of the blue line. And at some point, we have a almost perfect model of, of the goal function. So how can we apply this to generation of parameter adaptation methods? So the idea is as follows. If we need to make some dependence between variables, we could use, for example, Taylor, Taylor series. So here, the, the first equation is, in fact, the Taylor series. So we take success rate as an input, and we set the coefficients, and we get the p best parameter. Then we scale it from two zero one, and we use minimum, maximum, lower and upper values, so that we could start, for example, from zero point two and go to zero point eight, not just from zero to one. So we get with random coefficients graph, like you see on, on the bottom of the slide. So then, then how we, how do we measure the efficiency of, of parameter adaptation method? So one of the standard ways is to use the Man-Whitney test. We compare one algorithm and another algorithm. But we can actually use this as, as a measure of, of efficiency of our parameter adaptation. So we can take baseline algorithm, then take the new generated heuristic, and compare the test results by just calculating standard scores. Well, you know, standard score is like a Z score from standard normal distribution. So when we tested this for generating FCR and population size, and we ended up with something like this. So these are the automatically generated curves that connect the success rate and some parameter in the algorithm. So this was quite, quite a success, so it worked better. But here, our focus is on the p best parameter. So here you can see the settings of the algorithm. So we had fourteen variables for our ego algorithm. Twelve of them are Taylor series coefficients, and two are just the range, minimum and maximum. So we used one thousand evaluations. So we had to evaluate automatically one thousand different heuristics on thirty-dimensional functions CC twenty seventeen. And the LNTAD algorithm, for which we generated the new heuristic, was the baseline. So again, this gradient is coefficient PB in standard algorithm is simply zero point three. So we used two benchmarks, as I said, CC twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-two. These are quite different, because different set of functions, different computation resource. So what did it find? The ego algorithm resulted in something like this. So on this slide, we have twenty-five best curves connecting success rate and the p best parameter. And you see, the dependence is quite simple. So if the success rate is low, then we just take fifty percent of the best to move to them. So this means we explore the search space. And if the success rate is high, then we're moving in the right direction. Everything is okay. Let's just go to some of the best individuals and converge. So here are the comparison to, the tables with comparison to the standard LNTAD algorithm. And as Man-Whitney tests show, most of the cases, in low-dimensional and high-dimensional problems on CC seventeen, we have improvement. So like seven wins, one loss, something like this. Also for CC twenty twenty-two benchmark, we have some improvements in ten-dimensional case, but not so many in twenty-dimensional case. If you compare it to other methods, like on, on CC twenty seventeen, in ten D case, it is not very well performing. But if we increase the dimensionality of problems, the new method outperforms most of them, like twenty-six problems out of thirty, or sixteen, and so on. If we move to CC twenty twenty-two, the latest benchmark, actually, if we look at the EA four A, which is the winner of this competition, in ten-dimensional case, the new algorithm outperformed it like on six problems out of twelve, which is quite, quite, and, well, it performs well compared to others. So in conclusion, what can we see? We applied the hyper heuristic approach to find actually the new knowledge about how to control the p best parameter. Because, well, nobody used the success rate-based adaptation before, and I had no idea what should be the dependence. Should it go up, down? Well, it shows it should go from zero point five to zero gradually. And the dependence is, is quite simple. We can use not Taylor series coefficients, but maybe some simpler equation to connect these two values and improve the performance. In general, this approach can be used to any other algorithm, which we can calculate and evaluate, and we can design new heuristic in an automatic way like this. Also, one more remark is that ego is in fact not the best choice for this. We've made experiments with other algorithms replacing ego, because the problem is that the, the measurement, the total standard score, is actually random. So it depends on the, on the algorithm performance, and it is a noisy function. And ego is not very well designed. It is not designed for noisy functions. So maybe it's better to use some other method. Okay, thank you for your attention, and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So we have enough time to ask questions, so you're welcome. Okay, maybe I will begin. I have a question about applying genetic programming. Genetic programming starts with random solutions and tries very different combinations. Is it necessary to use three representation instead of, for example, linear genetic programming, which appears with rather simple expressions? Or maybe it's much better to use a kind of artificially defined functions, just tune well-known distributions? Is it, is it necessary to create distribution from the beginning?
Oh, good question. I don't know. In fact, the, the genetic programming, I mean, it worked, but it took much longer time to generate heuristic. So maybe this standard symbolic regression genetic programming is not the best choice for this kind of problem. So this is why we switched from genetic programming to Taylor series, much more flexible approach. So yeah, okay, maybe some automatically defined functions or different type of genetic programming. Or we actually made experiments with neuroevolution, but it also didn't work very well. So in my opinion, just use something like Taylor series. And yes, it gives you more, more coefficients to tune, coefficients to tune, but actually, it works. So genetic programming was like an initial idea that found that success rate is important. This one, it did perfectly. But actually, it took like a year for me to come from this slide to this slide to see that this is the, the dependent. So yeah, this genetic programming is not perfect.
Well, I see. Thank you very much. Okay, if anybody would like to ask question, we still have time. Okay, I think there was a lot of information to think about. So now everybody tried to somehow decompose in your mind. Okay, thank you very much. And we moved to our next presentation. The paper is, is proposed by Chen Yan Wang and Sergey Buzhitsky, entitled "Improving E-commerce Sales Forecasting by Machine Learning Methods in Standing." Yes, it will be presented by Chen Yan Wang. So we see your presentation. You can switch on your microphone as we begin. Is that okay? Yes, you hear and see you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Wang Chunyang. I am come from China and now a student in Siberia Federal University currently. In the fourth year of my PhD, I'm very happy to present my research topic here today. The topic of my speech is improving e-commerce sales forecasting by machine learning methods ensemble. I used this many methods to building a sales forecast model for the e-commerce platform through the CRISPR-Dm modeling process to promote the company's marketing decision and business development. Here, we, and the sales forecast of Chinese e-commerce platform as an example. And the purpose of the study is that many companies, companies need to take accurate forecast of many dates within their business scope and operations to arrange the next stage of the production, storage, transportation, marketing, and new business expansion. Through studying the literature and the company service, we found that the biggest problem is the customer application of forecasting technology in, in the companies is the disconnect between the business, business forecasting needs and forecasting technology. And if the sales volume in the next few days can be obtained through prediction, it will guide the operation of the company and significantly reduces the company's operating costs. Now me introduce the CrossFit Industrial Standard Process for this many. The CRISPR-Dm provides a complete process description for knowledge and discovery in database. This model divides the KDB project into six sections: business understanding, data understanding, and the preparation, modeling, evaluation, and deployment. The work of each stage will also be shown below in this order. The prediction process is on the CRISPR-Dm process compared with the traditional prediction process pays more attention to the combination of data and the business knowledge. And the prediction effect is excellent in the current content of big data. In the business understanding stage, here is a brief explanation based on the specific goals of this example. From the perspective of detection, plan, platform, sales, forecast is a macro-level predictive forecast. From the perspective of the forecast circle, the daily sales volume in the lex mouse is a short-term accurate forecast, which is data in base. Forecasting, plan, the form, level, sales, individual characteristic can get lost in larger amount of date. In most forecasting texts, traffic is not something that the company can obtain in advance as a norm variable. Traffic and the sales as a result of consumer purchasing behavior rather than factors that can affect my bias shopping behavior. Combine the knowledge and of consumer behavior and online marketing. We can summarize all the factors that affection affects sales. Next possible influence factory will be quantified. Factory that cannot be directly quantified will be measured using direct in the, in this. The original date mainly comes from two ways. On the one hand, obtaining relevant data through the internal, internal database of the e-commerce company. On the other hand, detecting them required data from publicly available database on the internet. Only which are the August twenty twenty-two, July twenty twenty-one as the time span for modeling. This time period covers complete records of all types of data, and a total of three hundred fifty-three pieces of data were obtained. And after data feature exploration and data processing, among them, exploratory analysis use scatter plus and box plus, which can in displays the distribution of all case attributes and the corollary, corollaries between attributes. During the data processing process, it went through the data clean stage. Data clean attempts to delete duplicate value, fill in missing value, select the date within the valid, valid period and discover out nine and correct inconsistencies in the date caused by different statistical categories. Finally, the obtained date is a standard dust, and then the data that can be used for machine learning is obtained. Finally, we got the standard dust date as soon, as soon as the picture. In the modeling stage, we forced analyze the common machine learning methods, such as linear regression, random forest regression, SWM regression, and narrow networks. In the model flex stage, we conducted a comprehensive comparos and variation, and finally, select linear regression models, support vector regression models, and random forest regression model for a rarity of prediction models. The following image are example of the model used. Because if, in fact, the diversity of contributions of comprehensive method is difficult to already know it. And it is called to tell in advance which comprehensive method is the best. About how to measure the forecast error, we use the coefficient of determination I score root means. I score, uh, root means, uh, root means, uh, scratch, uh, error. And the mean absolute percent error. Among them, the, uh, approved efficient of, uh, determination. I score is a measure of fitting degree of the linear regression, uh, equation. The issue of adaptive, but the data, uh, historical data of predictor variables can be determined. By comprehensively comparing the direction accuracy of the training set. Uh, and the prediction set. However, uh, we use the mean, uh, absolute percentage error. Uh, MAP to measure whether the, um, direction is feasible. Um, in terms of, uh, how to split training and test data. We, uh, divide the training data set into two parts. Uh, one part continues, uh, to be retained this set. And the other part is the test set. Um, the training set is used to, uh, training the model. And the test set is used for more model selection based on the principle. And the more, uh, the more method widely used in practical applications is the, um, improve key for the, um, cross validation method. Uh, forced randomlyly, uh, divides the data into key subsets, um, that I disjointed and of, um, of the same size. Then use key minus one subsets as the training set. And the remaining one as the test sets. Uh, after repeating key times, the model with the smallest average calculation error on the test set is selected. After going through, then data, uh, segregation, modeling, modeling evaluate, evaluation, modeling, uh, from, uh, application. And repeat the previous two steps until the model performance reaches a satisfactory level. The finally, um, optimize, optimize the model is used to predict or analyze the entire this side. The following are the training sites predict results as shown in table one. Um, where the first and the second, um, columns, uh, as the select most and the feature, um, respectively. The test set prediction results are showing in table two. After, uh, in-depth, uh, analysis and modeling. Sorry. Uh, the text set predict results, uh, are showing in table two. After, eh, in-depth analysis and modeling of the collect, um, quantitative, um, data on influencer factors. The prediction model, um, constructed should have high accuracy. Uh, the results shows that based on the currently available data. We have been able to build, um, a predictive, predictive model with a good performance. After selecting the best model, uh, we randomly select the thirty, um, consecutive days of it to, um, predict sales. And, uh, compelled it to with, uh, extra thirty days sales date. Uh, to verify the accuracy of the model. We, uh, conduct this text three times in total. And finally, select the average, the comparison chart between forecast sales. And, uh, actual sales is shown in the figure below. The red line is a feature is the practical sales volume. And blue line is the, um, actual sales volume. Uh, it has been calculated that the, um, matching of the error between forecast sales and the actual sales is approximately fourteen percent. It already have relative, um, risk, reasonable and practical use value. Uh, the conclusion is that, um, matching nine regression has a good, um, practice, uh, petition effort, uh, effort. And, uh, it highly interpretable, meeting the application needs, uh, ecommerce companies. However, considering feature business cut and the expansion of prediction models. Such as, um, prediction during promotion, um, periods, uh, sports vector machine has better skill, skill ability. Uh, so it is recommend that those two prediction models, um, be used as a prediction model too for business personnel. Thank you. Uh, thank for attention and any question.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, we have time to ask questions, so please ask.
Uh, maybe I have a question.
Yes, you're welcome.
Hmm?
Uh, you mentioned the integration of multiple predict, uh, predictive models in your presentation. So, far the ways of these models distribute?
Um, um, it's a good, uh, it's a good question. Um, um, when integrates multiple, um, uh, prediction models, uh. Uh, we use a, uh, weight, uh, average method, uh, to, uh, uh, allocate the weight. Um, uh, specific, uh, we, uh, assign a corresponding weight to each model. Um, based on its performance, uh, on history date. Uh, uh, like, uh, model that perform more, um, uh, have, have a good performance. It will, uh, get a larger weight and, uh, otherwise, uh, it, uh, performance, uh, was. Uh, it will be got a small weights.
Oh, okay. Thanks for listening.
Well, more questions?
Okay, maybe I will ask one question. Uh, you talk about business applications, uh, mainly about predicting sales. Uh, such models like neural networks or, uh, SVM, usually known as black box model. So, what, uh, these, uh, models can give good accuracy. But you cannot understand how they make predictions. Uh, is it necessary for business application to have, uh, models which can be understandable by human? For example, uh, linear model can be interpreted. You, you can see coefficients and understand which factor is much more important than others. How do you think? Is it necessary to use white model, white box model instead of black box model?
Uh, um, 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 I think, uh, I, I think it's, um, I think it's necessary to, um, use a white mo, um, white model to, um, black, um, black case model. Uh, um, um.
Um. Okay, I explain, uh, sometimes when we have applications, for example, in banking. Uh, some banks ask us to build model which can be, which are understandable for, uh, human experts. If you, if you build, for example, neural network, bank cannot use it. Because there is a risk of mistake. And if you don't understand how you get this mistake, you can, uh, lost a lot of money. That's why everybody want to know exactly what is inside model. That's why many business applications try to build white box model instead of blacks, black box model. Okay, uh, of course it depends on application. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, if anybody would like to ask question, we still have a time because as I see, uh, we don't have next presenter here. Okay, I think no questions. Thank you very much again for your interesting presentation. Uh, well, our next presenter should be. Ju Wei Li, but I can see him in our conference. Uh, maybe he has problem with connection. That's why we will move to our next presenter, Zaha Novikov. With, uh, presentation titled Development and Analysis of a Self-Configuring Differential Evolution Algorithm. Uh, Zaha, you're welcome. Share your screen.
I need to restart Zoom to share my screen, uh, one second.
Okay, we wait just a minute because we have additional twenty minutes in this session.
Yes, I think it's okay. We hear and see you, so we'll stop. Uh, hello, my name is Novikov Zaha. And today I will tell you about the self-configuration differential evolution algorithm. Which we developed to solve parameter tuning problem. Uh, first, let's talk about black box optimization. Uh, in the field of computational optimization, there exists a class of global optimization problems known as black box problems. These problems involve finding the optimal solution within a complex and often nonlinear search space. Where the underlying mathematical functions, um, are either unknown or not readily interpretable. We can define a black box optimization problem as shown in the first formula in this slide. Uh, the goal is to find a vector of input parameters X star that minimizes or maybe maximizes the objective function. Uh, however, in practical optimization scenarios, uh, it is often the case that we cannot precisely determine the global minimum of a function. Uh, due to various factors, including measurement noise, uh, or numerical approximations. To account for this uncertainty, the first quality is frequently transformed into inequality shown below. Uh, with epsilon representing an error or tolerance level in our task. In this study, we set epsilon equal to point zero, point zero one. Uh, let's move to differential evolution. Among optimization algorithms often used for dealing with black box optimization problems. Uh, one of the frequently used ones is the differential evolution. Uh, differential evolution is a prominent evolutionary algorithm widely employed for solving this kind of problems. Uh, especially characterized by black box objective function. Um, differential evolution is known for its effectiveness in exploring complex and nonlinear solution spaces, making it valuable tool. Differential evolution operates on population of candidate solutions. Uh, employing a set of strategies to create new individuals through mutation, crossover, uh, and selection. Uh, the algorithm iteratively refines these individuals while aiming to improve the objective function value. Uh, one of the differential evolution's distinctive features is its ability to balance exploration, which means searching for diverse regions, uh, and exploitations. Uh, which means converging towards the best known solution. Parameters of the differential evolution algorithm are shown here. Uh, it's a weighting coefficient for mutation, a crossover rate, it may population size, which not shown here. And mutation strategy can be considered as parameter as well. Uh, the algorithm stops when the maximum number of populations is reached. So, we selected three different differential evolution algorithms. Denoted in this table as DE one, D two, and D three. With different parameters for waiting coefficient, crossover rate, and mutation strategy. Uh, and applied them to four benchmark functions, which was, uh, which were, uh, string functions. One function denoted as F one, Schweffer function denoted as F two, Ackley function denoted as F three, and Rosenbrock function denoted as F four. Uh, each of these test functions were considered in two versions. One with the two variables and another with ten variables. To ensure accuracy, we conducted forty runs, uh, for each algorithm. Uh, this slide shows the result, results of this experiment in the left table. Relabilities are shown and the right table displays, uh, a mean values of the best solution of each run over forty repetitions. Uh, as can be seen, the performance of the differential evolution, uh, is notably influenced by its configuration parameters. Uh, careful adjustments of these parameters can lead to, uh, very good results. Enhancing the algorithm's ability to find optimal solution. Uh, however, different problems may require distinct parameters settings to achieve, uh, optimal outcomes. Uh, as you can see in these tables, in our case, third algorithm denoted as D three. Uh, handled with Rosenbrock function, uh, where two other functions failed. But, uh, this third algorithm was unable to find optimal solutions for Schweffer function and for Ackley function. And of course, searching through all possible parameters, um, programmatically can be, uh, prohibitively expensive. Uh, in terms of computational resources. Uh, therefore, the challenge lies not only in identifying suitable parameter configurations. But also in doing so efficiently, considering the specific characteristics of the problem at hand. Uh, but our problem is a black box problem, so we cannot set our parameters, uh, by ourselves. We need to, uh, we need some mechanism to do it for us. So, uh, we developed a self-configuring differential evolution algorithm to solve this parameter tuning problem. Uh, its core idea is to periodically reevaluate the choice of algorithm type. And its associated parameters with selection favoring those configurations that have demonstrated superior performance. Uh, you can see the implementation of the algorithm on the slide. Uh, on the left part, there is initialization and on the right, uh, the main loop is shown. So, in the first step of initialization, an array of algorithm types from which self-configuring algorithm will be selected. Is, uh, resetting. from which self-configuring algorithm will be selected is resetting this. In our case, it was three differential evolution algorithms which, on which we conducted experiments that I shown on previous slide. So for each predefined type of algorithm, there is an associated probability of selecting that algorithm denoted as P. Also, the number of successful iterations of that type denoted as S and the number of unsuccessful iteration of that type denoted as F. Successful iterations are those in which the algorithm has improved the best value found. As for probabilities, as you can see, initially all algorithm types have unequal probability of being chosen. Next, they shown three parameters specific to this self-configuring algorithm. First is number of iteration k, which means that once every k iterations, a new algorithm will be selected. Next, there is delta, which subtracted from all the probabilities of the algorithm types to recalculate them. And fourth is, is algorithm's type, algorithm types minimum probability of being selected. The next three steps is relate to differential evolution, so it's not interesting to talk about them. So first, in the main loop, random algorithm type is selected based on each algorithm types probability. And during the predefined k number of iterations, new populations are generated with selected differential evolution. And parameters S and F of chosen algorithm type are updated depending on whether the best value was improved or not. After that, the algorithm types are ranked according to, no, sorry, following that, we apply an adjustment mechanism. Here it is. Adjusted mechanism, a specific delta value is subtracted from each probability while leaving a certain minimum probability which we set in the initialization. So the subtracted amount which we subtracted is stored in the variable denoted as sum. After that, the algorithm types are ranked according to the values of S and F. We considered two type of ranking, based on difference between successful and unsuccessful iterations and based solely on the number of successful iterations. Maybe you think that these types of ranking are quite similar because the same number of iterations will give the same results. However, these ranking types are not identical as algorithm types are not selected the same amount of time. For instance, after completing the first k iterations, a particular algorithm is chosen once, while the remaining algorithms are not selected at all. And depending on the chosen type of ranking, the algorithm may be positioned either at the forefront or at the end of the ranking order. Next, sum. Next, the sum of the subtracted values is redistributed between the probabilities of the algorithm types according to their rank. The better the algorithm performed, the more will be added to its probability from sum. After that, we go back to the start of the main loop when the new algorithm is selected based on already recalculated probabilities. When number of populations denoted as lowercase m reaches the maximum of number populations, uppercase M, main loop will end. And the last step is to pick the best vector from the last population. It's also noteworthy that this self-configuration scheme is not limited only to differential evolution. It could be applied to other optimization algorithms such as genetic algorithms or particle storm operation or something else because there are no some specific operations related to differential evolution. So we developed and tested such algorithm and results shown in the current slides. Results given with the average of results of conventional differential evolution algorithms for comparison. As can be seen in the table, the self-configuring algorithm consistently demonstrates performance on powerheads or superior to the reliability and mean values achieved by conventional algorithm. This observation implies that self-configuring algorithm hold a distinct advantage in optimization tasks. The data suggests that when employing a self-configuring algorithm, there is increased likelihood of achieving superior results compared to use of conventional algorithms. This outcome underscores the advantages leveraging self-configuring algorithms for optimization tasks. So in conclusion, in our research, we explored the effectiveness of three different differential evolution algorithms. Each configured with unique parameter set. And in them, we applied it to solving black box optimization problem. Our experiments with conventional algorithms confirmed that the performance of these algorithms heavily dependent on, on the chosen parameter configurations. It became evident that selecting the right combination of parameters was a non-trivial task and misconfiguration could significantly, significantly hinder the algorithm's ability to find optimal solution. In response to this parameter sensitivity, we devised approach in form of self-configuring algorithm. This algorithm periodically reassesses its choice of algorithm type with its associated parameters during the optimization process. What we observed was that in the majority of cases, this self-configuring algorithm consistently matched or outperformed the traditional differential evolution variants. This performance demonstrated the potential this self-configuring algorithm has. And also, of course, must be noted that the basic principle of this self-configuration is not specific only to differential evolution, as it can be used with as optimization algorithm which can continuous calculations, no matter, don't, which don't depend on previous parameters. That's all. Thank you for your attention. I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, please? Okay, maybe I will start questions. Can you repeat how you tune parameters for each differential evolution? I mean, two parameters, crossover rate and mutation factor, CR and F.
We don't tune these parameters. We set initially a few variants of algorithms in which these parameters already set and our self-configuring algorithm is chose from these algorithm types, not from the parameters, but from...
I see, I see. And even we don't, how to say, fine tune parameters, we still get some improvement. How do you, how do you think if we will use self-adaptive differential evolutions? It means that each of three algorithms will also tune parameters. Can we get much better results?
Yes, I think we can. I think we can initially set just the mutation strategies and some random parameters and use adaptive techniques to tune these parameters like weighting coefficient or crossover rate. And we will be tuning this, this parameters while also switching between different mutation strategies to, to, to watch more, for more variants to handle this task we have. So I think, yeah, it, it will be great improvement.
Okay, I think it will be your next step in your search. Thank you for answer. Okay, questions, please? Still have time? Okay, I don't see questions from our participants. So thank you very much again for interesting talk. Well, we have our previous presenter now in conference. So I would like to announce Jue Li. This paper titled "A Comparative Study of State-of-the-Aart Multi-Objective Optimization Algorithms." So you're welcome. Please share your screen.
Hello.
Yes, we hear and see you, so you may start your presentation.
Okay. Hello everyone, and thanks for listening my presentation. And my title is "A Comparative Study of the State-of-the-Aart Multi-Object Optimization Algorithm." And the multi-object, multi, multi-objective optimization is a critical accept of the computation problem solving, prevalent in both scientists, scientific research and the practical engineering. MOO challenges involving balancing multiple, often in, in, often conflicting objectives. A concept central to design-making in complex systems among the plethora of algorithm MO. NSGA2, NSGA3, RVEA, and SMASEMO stand up for their inquiry adaptability to various conditions. This paper in dividers to compare these algorithm focusing on their streams and limitations in different optimization scenarios. Such comparative analysis is vital for identifying the most suitable algorithms for specific MO challenges. Evaluating the performance of MO algorithms generally involves three methods focusing on convergence, convexity indexed, or a combination of both. This multi-fected approach is, isn't, is sense, is sense terrible comprehensive assessments of all algorithms' effectiveness in navigating the complex landscape of MO. And so our combination algorithm, the first it is NSGA2. NSGA2 is a classic multi-objective optimization genetic algorithm was proposed by DEB at, in 2002 years. This algorithm is distinguished by its fast, non-dimated sub-team method and crowding comparison operation. This features healthy mainly pollution diversity and, and accelerate convergence to the power tool front. NSGA2 has demonstrated excellent performance across viral engineering and scientific, scientific problems, establishing it as a benchmark for new algorithm evaluation. And next is NSGA3. It will sharing a similar framework with NSGA2. Different, 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 the, different, that the, different T. It itself primarily in its selection mechanism. NSGA2 employs coding for ranking and method less affecting high-dimensional objects space in construct ASG3. Adapt is mentionism and maintains pollution diversity through the introduction of widely distributed reference point. This make NSGA3 particularly adept at solving super multi-object optimization problem which involved four or more object. And the third is RE, RVEA. The reference vector guided evolution algorithm as innately based on DEB at, as them's work employs a reference point method to generate uniformly uniformly distributed reference point in the high signal target space. This approach aim to yield a setup uniformly distributed portal approximated solutions. Building on is, Chen introduced the key figures now RVA. The use of the scannalization method of the Android analysis, distance, APD, APD, dimensionally balanced convergence and diversity in high-dimensional object optimization. It's got distinguished RVA in the realm of the multi-object objective evaluationary algorithms. And the last is SMASEMOA. The core of the SMASEMOA algorithms utilize the metric of the dominant, dimension, hyper-volumes to guide the search proceeds. The dominating hyper-volume is to volume of the region of the objective space that consists of the set of solution and the reference point. It is commonly used a quality, quality metric for the comparing the results of the multi-objective optimization algorithm. SMACMOA employ a selection mechanism based on the contribution of the hyper-volume which give performance to those indicate, in, in, in deep individuals that contribute more to the hyper-volumes. This mechanism encouraged the individual individuals in the pollution to evolve towards the pautral frontier wise, maintaining diversity among individuals. SMASEMOA demonstrate excellent performance on its several standard multi-objective optimization test problems, effectively approximating the pautral frontier and dimension solution diversity problems. And my experimental environment, we employed the framework to employ it under the evaluate format to multi-objective optimization algorithm and SGA2 and 3 and EV, RVEA and SMASEMOA. To a, to a certain thorough robustness and consistency of these algorithms we execute three, 30 independence runs. Each runs was init, initialized with on a unique and random seed, randomly for 0 to 29. So in the primal framework, the multi-object, objective optimization algorithm named this and general uni, unis in the set of common default parameters. This include crossover, the stand-up crossover. The value is already set up, the 0.9 and the mutation. And with the mutation probably is common set to, to, to this. And this is what we test about hyp, hyper-volumes. It is widely used performance metrics in multi-objective optimization. It, it measures the region of the, in the objective space that dominated by the non-dominated solution set and, and bounded by a reference point. And so we mainly focus on our results. So it is a generation, this, uh, distance is a measure of the how close the solution found by the algorithm to know the pautral, pautral optimal front. This computed as the average distance from each solution in the non-dimated set at to the nearest point on the true proto uh from front. And the the third it is a this word is diversity metric. Diversity metric as a corrente in the evaluating the spirit and on and uni- uniformity city of uniformity of the solutions across the proto front. So it is ours of first the picture, uh we have the six, 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 six page, six picture. And we can and we can see from the uh it is from the first the uh our the bachelor uh uh benchmark uh test function, it is the Z D Z D T. And it is the one to the six uh in this, in this page, we didn't mark inside, so. And we can see the N S G A two and S three three shows are consist in the in the medium H H V four ones, they are the older the H V performance of the algorithm. And suggesting the reliable performance S M S M S E M O A also um demonstrated uh consistently by but but with more a bill uh a variability in H H V values as included by the large uh inter- intercride intercritical range. The speed of the H V values and the outlines. Um R V E A ap- appearance to have the widely uh spirit and more lines in Z D T two and D D T three and D D T five. Indicated less uh rap- no, rappy raps genius in terms of the medium H V values which I indicated the center uh ten tendency of the each algorithm performance. S M S E M O A and S F and N S G A two tendies to have the largest media values across most uh Z D T function which may suggest a better performance in approximating to the proto front. The the pre- the process of the outlines, especially those that are significantly lower than the main conclusion of the data. Suggested that this uh instance with algorithm performance poorly compared to the to its top the uh typical performance. Uh R E V A shows several outlines in D D T two and the D D T three. Uh indicating some runs where improvements was significantly worse than average. H Z D T text function pro- uh poses difficult challenge to the optimization algorithm, for example. They did this during and they did it six are the known to be a particularly challenging due to their uh this disconnected proto front and the non-uniform this uh density of the proto optimal solution. Respectively, the performance on this function can be very telling about algorithms ability to handle complex optimization landscape compare algorithm. S J two and S M A C M O A seems to have better overall performance in terms of higher medium H V and feel low outlines. Uh S J three appeals to performance uh slightly less weird, but is still com- com- competitive. Competitive, competitive, establishing a uh Z T six. Uh R E V A has more varied varied performance with significantly number of outlines on the two and three, which might indicated um difficulty with certain types of optimal landscape. And this is a generational distance performance of different algorithm with different C D T function. And D D T and N S G A two and N S G A three uh general uh generally consistent in man- in maintaining a lower G D across more functions suggesting they are reliable for approximating the proto form front. I V A and it exhibits high G D values in several test function, just like uh C D T two, D D T three and four and six. Which impliedly that it may not comes consistently approximate to the proto from where across different type of problems. S M A C M O A shows a median ground performance with the reasonable G D values. But now not consistently as low as N S G A two or three. So in concluding, S J two and S three three would like to be the prefer choice for them uh for their consisting prot- uh proxies mounted to the frontal from the cross the mountain Z D T function. R E V A seems to struggle with Z D T function, indicating it may not be the best choice. Uh best choice for problems similar to those test function. S M A C M O A uh represented a a reasonable compromise although not excelling to the level of the S J two or N S J three. The it is a a proto uh from fronts for the Z D T familiar of the function and the four algorithms. And so we can see these um the performance tender observed in D D T one presented in Z D T two where the uh can continue continually.
You are limited in time, please go to conclusion.
Okay. Uh uh this is the diversity metric. This and then the conclusion. Uh our our fund, our funding suggests an new seat se- uh selection of self-optimization algorithm based on problems uh characteristics and the uh direct outcomes. Future research should exploit adopting the then chamisms as along the algorithm to pilot their search stra- strategies to specific problems landscape. Thereby enhance the ru- uh robustness and performance. Additional additionally, uh further in investigation into the case of the outlines and the variable in R V E A's performance could lead to refinements in algorithm algorithmic design for employing roughness across diverse optimization uh scenarios. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for your presentation, so questions please. I think we have uh time only for one. Or maybe short two questions.
Yeah, I have a short question, uh. How did you choose uh algorithms for comparison? Only, only for, how did you choose?
Uh because of the, I need to think about the the bachelor test. And uh because uh actually we can't get the the original data of the N S G A three, but I I also want to compare is the two and three, the the different the different performance of these two function. And the R V A is totally didn't show the the same performance of the other other algorithm because uh uh we we can see the result is very different. And the S M A C M O A is makes some uh much uh more and uh much, much and and a new change inside, so. So uh it's kind of random, but I prefer like to compare the first of three. So the last one is I I think to make some other, I I want to interestingly algorithms inside, so that is why.
Okay, thank you. Okay, more questions? Okay, I have one short question. Uh you use generational distance as one of the measures of uh performance. Uh as I know, this measure need uh data on true parrot of front. What about real world problems? Uh what measure to use if you don't know real right of front?
Uh could you please to say it again?
Uh okay, one, one slide up.
This uh
No, 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 no.
Change it.
Uh
Uh uh this.
Yes, stop, stop, stop here.
Yeah.
You see a generational distance. Uh and this measure means that you know answer for your problem and you get population and you compare how close you are. But what about if I don't know the real answer? What measure to use?
Uh if you don't know the real answer about how to, how can I to see the generic uh distance?
No, you can, you cannot calculate generational distance, but how can you estimate quality of your elder? What else you can calculate there?
Uh
Maybe other, other measures or other.
Yeah. Uh yes, we yeah, we I I also can come to compare this to algorithms uh uh calculate times and I I can change the change the different generation to uh to do the more complex to calculate for each algorithm and to change to see the uh when the the generation start grow and how 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 the result uh going to be.
Um okay, what about a hyper volume? Hyper volume does it need uh data on real or at the front or no?
Uh Uh actually, uh yeah, uh first, uh wh- when I use the pi model, maybe uh because uh our the research is based on the pi model, so when I use it, I uh maybe I I didn't think, think, I didn't use it, so uh I should to found more found more another methods maybe to compare this uh different algorithm.
I mean that generation distance is good for uh test problems with known answer, but when you will deal with real world problems, you need to compare using some other metrics. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we will finish this discussion here and we have one more presentation uh which will be from Konstantin Atradnov and title is the observed characteristics of the parameters distribution functions of the time series social dynamics processes. Uh Konstantin, I see you are here, so you can share your screen.
Yes, that's right, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay.
Well, now we also see you, so you may start.
It's good. Uh good afternoon, today I present to you a scientific paper on the topic, the absurd characteristics of the parameters distribution functions of the time series social dynamic processes, fragility, self-organization and memory. Uh to begin this, I need to pay attention to the relevance and purpose of our work. First of all, its internet networks, especially news and blogs platforms uh reflect the emotional state of users and play the role of indicators of public opinion and mood. And secondary, it's emotional responses affect society as whole. Uh positive emotions simulate uh confidence and activity, while depressive tendencies can lead to uh uncertainty and decline. Uh Moreover, about purpose and object of uh our study, the purpose of the study is uh to analyze the time series of social dynamic processes and determine its characteristics, for example, such as fractality, uh self-organization and memory availability. And the second is the object of our study is time series reflecting the reactions of users to news events. Uh Our experimental produce uh produ- procedure and data source selection. Uh there are newest, uh we take uh the uh information resource renaissance and the renaissance information resource was uh chosen for the our study because it ranked first among Russian media according to uh bear analytics. And it was one of the top three most cited news agencies in the Russian media. Uh and next we need to discuss how to collect data and uh the technology, uh the technologies we used. Uh we collect uh news and reactions. From news, we collect news ID, news title, news URL, uh news publication date and time or this called timestamp, uh numbers of views and news text, uh context of news. Uh and uh rec and we collect reactions and from reactions we collect type of reaction, number of reactions and what news this entry refers to. On the slide, you can see database, our database structure. Uh With the help of software and hardware parser developed it special for the real site. A database was collected, uh a collection of news texts, their metadata and user reactions to news. As a result of uh that collection, we collect six types of reactions. Uh we collected such reaction as like, funny, amazing, sad, outrageous and not like or dislike. Um um on the next slide, you can see our time series. Um On the time series, uh three reactions are uh Mr. Gosh and it is like, amazing and dislike. Like and dislike reactions we choosing as as the main reactions since they were most chosen by users on the portal renaissance. And the amazing action was chosen as a secondary reaction. Uh Moreover, on uh this slide and slide shows figure number one. It's temporary series of emotional attitude of users of the real novelty portal to the news published during the day for a period uh from uh first January twenty nineteen to forty one uh December uh twenty twenty two. Uh Now and the order that Y uh axis of the graph shows in figure one characteristics uh the activity of users taking into account their action. Uh the Y coordinate value for the action is the ratio of the number of values for the uh considered traction obtained at the moment of time to the number of all reactions at the moment of time. One moment of time is one day. Uh uh So uh time series property study, uh we have time series and we have to investigate their characteristics and properties. Uh to do this, we use two approaches. Uh first approach is that RS analysis that show, that allows uh us to determine the uh presence of fractality and the value of the first parameter says or stochastic is uh zero point five or persistent uh much bigger than zero um the zero dot half uh dot five or anti-p persistent. Uh and secondary, we want to see how the am- amplitude of uh um deviations between the levels of the series will depend on the interval of time for calculating this amplitude. Uh construct distribution functions calculate for them uh the dependence of expect- of uh mathematics, expectations, dispersion, asymmetry and excess. Uh moreover, excess can be uh compared with excess for normal distribution and And depending on this, we can talk about heavy tails. Uh they go higher or lower if and if they uh go higher, uh heavy tails, uh they slowly decrease. If lower, they quickly decrease. Uh and on this slide, uh on the uh and this slide shows uh figure number two. It's determination of the first indicator of the time series of uh the emotional it uh attitude of users of the reanostity portal to the news published during the day for our collecting period. Uh this is first uh image and second image. Uh you can uh see, you can see that um no, as as a result, uh the series is fractal, uh since uh her scope, her scope sent uh not like uh zero dot five and it have anti-presistance. In any convenient case, uh the series tries to change its strength. Uh because her scope sent is uh uh um less than uh zero dot five. Uh and it and this time series uh uh have short term, short term memory. Um of course, uh it's important to note uh uh that uh if the normal spread, uh if uh if we pay attention on the normal spread, then uh with increase in the time interval, the peaks would spread. Uh the peak uh the peaks would spread or the peak would become lower and wider. Uh and some any analytical procedure. Uh first of all, uh you must specify the size of the sliding window and select user activity data from the database for speci- specified range uh farther from the selected data, it is necessary to calculate the amplitudes of changing it uh in the amount of user activity. It shows on the figure number three, uh for different sizes of the sliding window, we choose uh size of stand a sliding window one and ten. Uh then the obtained sets of values must be sorted in uh ascendant order and histogram of the amplitude distribution uh density should be built for each sliding window. And then from the ten gystograms calculate the distribution moments, mathematical expectation uh dispersion, asymmetry and excess. Uh. Uh this slide shows uh figure number three and in left part figure number A. Uh it uh um uh figure three is gystograms of the distribution of amplitudes of changes in the levels of time series of the emotion later of users of the reanostity portal. Uh and uh on the left uh um figure, it's one sliding window, one day of sliding window in the on the right uh image, it's sliding window by ten days. By ten days. Uh. Uh on this uh figure is dependence of mathematical expectation, expectation. And uh next I will show you mathematical expectation, dispersion, asymmetry and access of our time series and on figure for dependence of the mathematical expectation of the uh amplitudes of changes in the level of time series of the emotion later of users of real host portal. Uh and next is the uh dispersion of amplitudes of changes in the levels of time series. Uh next is the asymmetry. Uh it's uh for uh like time series uh for dislike. And for um uh despite uh and uh on this slide uh shows uh figure number seven. It's dependence of the excess dispersion of amplitudes of changes in the levels of time series. And uh about and so um uh then let's discuss the results. Uh first of all, analysis of the absurd non-stationary time series shows that the processes and systems described by them have fractality and short term memory, the first indicator is significantly less than uh zero point five. Uh the time series describing the process considered are not certain, the values of the mathematical expectation and dispersion of the amplitudes of emotional rate of users when commenting on uh news in a complex way depend on the time interval for calculating these amplitudes by sliding window. Uh the um dependence of dispersion of the amplitudes of the emotional rate of users on the uh time interval of their um calculation has the character of um this uh uh equation. This question, where is um where the uh where alpha between zero and one and and that absurd processes have non-locality in time and when modeling the dynamics of non-stationarity time series based uh on different uh equations. They must contain a fractional derivatives in time. Uh and the complex dependence of the asymmetry, asymmetry of the amplitudes of the emotional rate of users of the interval of their calculations suggests that for the processes under consideration uh there is some self-organization manifested in the fact that not different uh that for different intervals of the time of calculation of asymmetry, uh there will be a different amount of drift. Uh of course, at small values of the amplitude calculation time interval, the magnitude of uh the excess of their distribution is significantly more than significant that for the normal distribution. And at large sliding window, it slowly decrease to a value uh equal to first uh time series for the much like uh value equal uh to three for emotion dislike uh and uh value equal to five and for motions uh surprising. Uh and five for the motion surprising, I can show you here. Uh. Oh, sorry. Oh, uh here it's about three for like, uh about five dislike and uh the peak of surprise at sixteen, the lower is about six. Uh. And uh this indicates the presence of heavy tails and may indicate memory after affection and self-organization of process. And when modeling the dynamics of observed process based on different equations, they must contain a fractional uh derivatives by state. And the last, when uh we'll be modeling the dynamics of the process under concentration and uh predicting the evolution describing their time series. Uh it is necessary to find uh other approaches and models that would fully take into account the products, the properties described earlier. Uh for example, based on uh different uh differential equations with partial fraction of fractions derivatives on the form uh show on this slide. Uh thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. We have uh short time for questions, so please ask questions. Well, I'll ask a question. Uh. So thank you very much for your interesting presentation. Uh you use parametric uh model, so you choose normal distribution. Uh I see why you use, but nevertheless, when we talk about uh non-stationary time series, uh the first idea which comes up is to use something like recurrent neural networks. Uh why don't you use machine learning methods with black box model, which can build much more complicated distributions?
Um.
Maybe just you can compare if it's better or.
No, um first of all, uh we don't use neural networks, because they require a lot of uh processing time. Therefore, we more prefer uh use uh uh um conversational approaches. Uh it's first of all, moreover, we uh uh um we haven't tried using uh narrow, narrow. Uh we don't try to use neural network and uh it's very good question, thank you very much. But unfortunately, uh now I'm not ready to answer to you to your question. But I will prepare uh to answer your question tomorrow, because tomorrow I will present another presentation with a related topic.
Thank you. Nevertheless, it's a good idea, try different ways uh to use uh parametric model and non-parametric model when you don't assume normal uh distribution. So maybe more complicated model will give you better results for analysis. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much. This is a very good idea and we will try this.
Okay, this was uh our final presentation for today. So we will finish our session for now. And tomorrow we will start second day of our conference. It will start at the same time. Uh nine o'clock in the central European time.